Welcome you all to the June 1 city council meeting and we'll start with roll call.
McDaniel?
Here.
Murdock?
Here.
Ritter?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
And Councilman Lane is absent this evening.
All right, thank you. If you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is consent agenda. Through the minutes of the council meeting in May 18 and approved pay ordinance number 808. Do you have any questions?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ritter?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried, Mayor.
All right. Next up is call in public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on this agenda. The comments that are discussed on the call in public may or may not be acted upon by the council during the meeting. There's a four minute time limit. Please stand and be recognized. Do I have anybody on the call in public? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. No old business. Four is new business. For a discussed request to vacate right of way at the northwest corner of Peoria and 83rd Street.
Yes, council, this is a familiar topic to us. We've had this in front of us two previous times this year. You'll remember our last discussion in May, we had a broader policy discussion on the matter of right of way vacations and concluded that we didn't need to pursue a broad policy discussion at this time, but that the general practice moving forward would be that we take these right of way vacation requests first to the planning commission to get their input and recommendation on the matter and then they would come to the council. So what we did in May is remain the issue with the planning commission. They took up the issue on May 23 and after some discussion had afforded a recommendation, and this would I think be an informal recommendation, to deny the request. So what we're back to discuss again is just some direction for staff and for the applicant. Mr. Irwin's not here tonight, I see. I'm not sure why. He was aware that we were going to discuss it tonight. But this is not a public hearing, so legally, Mr. Irwin would have a right to request the vacation public hearing and get a formal action from a governing body. But before he could do that, he would have to hire a surveyor to prepare a legal description for the right of way to be vacated, and as we've talked before, that would be a significant financial burden to him. So what we'd like to do is just get some general discussion feedback from the council so that Mr. Irwin can decide whether or not to pursue it further. Again, as we have, I think, from the beginning, staff recommendation would be to not grant the request primarily on the basis that there's not a particular development proposal on the table and there really isn't a compelling need that's being demonstrated at this time. Not to say that there won't ever be, so at this time, the recommendation would be to hold off on any action.
Is that a prerequisite for a vacation, that there has to be a compelling?
Absolutely not.
I would think a vacation could be requested anytime property's not being utilized. I mean, to me, it doesn't matter whether or not, if we need the property, then we would deny the vacation request. If we felt that we could do without the property and it could be better used by the adjacent property owner, then we would grant the request. I don't think that any plan that would come forward would have to be approved at some, you know, at whatever stage it was brought forward. I mean, if it was just a home addition, then it would be a building through a permit process. If it was more involved than that, then it would be through the planning commission, site plan process.
We discussed this before and we kind of just shoved it off to the side and the planning commission discussed it and they've voted no. What do we have to do to push it out of the way? I mean, get rid of it? What do we have to do? Here it says if this is pursued, the final decision will be part of a public hearing. So is the public going to come in and say, no, we can't do it? Or are we going to say it? Or the planning commission? Or who's going to say what?
We say it. When we have a formal request for vacation, then we would act on it. That's as Mike just said. We don't have that because...
I don't see no sense in even talking about it if we don't have a formal thing and it just keeps coming back up.
Well, since really the only reason to talk about it and have any further discussion is Mr. Irwin, if he wants to make a formal request...
Get after it.
Well, he would have to spend money.
I don't care.
Okay. And he doesn't want to do that if the feeling is that the request won't be granted.
He's right.
Well, I would say based on the consensus I've heard from the planning commission, and I think I'm the only voice that said I don't have a problem with it, so I mean...
I don't. I think if we're going to vacate that part for him, then we need to do it the whole street, all the way down.
That was the point made.
But then if you go up there and look at it, if you go look at it, you're going to be taking people's yards down through there. Down on down there, there's no space. But, you know, I kind of created this. If you'll stop and remember when we did that sidewalk? Well, right there at that location, the sidewalk went over and went back around from where that old house was there 25 years ago. And I got everybody to agree to make it go straight right along the street. And that gets some extra room there, and that's what's caused all this, me and my big mouth, I think.
I don't have a problem with it if there's a need for it. I don't, like Rick's saying, though, I guess if we don't need it, then there's no reason not to. But when I go drive by that property now, other than a fence on there, I'm not sure what other kind of development. And so a fence, I don't understand why he needs that much extra property, just a fence. So I'm just a little bit confused about what it is. I mean, you know, he added that garage to the back of that and it goes back so far now that, because that's not on this picture. You know, you go back and I can't imagine that, I guess if he's going to put a house on there, it's going to be some long skinny one and that maybe is why he would need the extra. But if it's just to have a fence, that doesn't make sense to me to give up the city, I mean, at what point would it be?
He wants to build room on, so I mean, you said...
Well, and that could be too, you know, maybe, but then you're going to, I don't know, you get this big added on obtrusive house going on now with stuff all hanging on. I'm not really in big favor of doing it at this point in time, but I guess just because I'm not quite sure what the point is.
Ron?
You know, at the planning meeting, we discussed this thing at length, and he was asked, what are you going to do with it? And he never couldn't really give us an answer what he wanted to do with it, he just wanted it. And we just felt that if you start this, you could open up a Pandora's box later on. And it doesn't really, giving him, it doesn't benefit the city any. It's just something that he's obsessed with. And just some of the questions that were asked, he just kind of went around about. He wouldn't answer them directly. You can't be upfront with us, you know. I have a problem with that. And it was 100 percent. All of us turned it down.
And, you know, in response to Ron, I think that even if you have a public hearing on it, more than likely, Ron, you're not going to have public come in and talk on it. It's going to be us making this decision. And we're back to the whole point, well, what do you need it for? You know, what's the point of it other than just to have more land? I mean, that's quite a bit of land to be given, not that we're going to use, you know. That's the whole point is, is yeah, we're probably not going to need it, but...
I can't see us ever needing it because that street doesn't go on anywhere.
It doesn't go.
We're never going to buy the street. The utilities are already in, but the point of giving it up would be if it gained value on the other side, we would see a benefit in increased...
If he'd come to us and said, I want to build a room on the east side of my house right here and that's going to bring more tax dollars in, I can say, do it.
Right.
Fence isn't going to, and a garden?
Esperius.
Our espersus.
Sell it to him.
Well, we can't sell it. Right, it's a whole other deal.
The direction I guess you give him is to bring a formal request forward then and...
Yeah, that would be the next step. So I'll let him know the discussion. He was at the planning commission meeting, so we'll let him make his own decision.
Yeah, I think he should look at the video and see what he thinks to vote to my call.
Right. I think that's right. I think that's all we needed. Thank you. I know that was not the top on our list.
All right. Moving on. Item 4B, consider final plat for Coker Hill State West.
I have to declare a conflict again tonight on this one.
No, we don't.
You got another job?
Well, it's the same job, but it's just the next piece of...
Go ahead, Brad.
Yes, so up here on behalf of Brad this evening, I didn't say he could take the night off for this one. This is a very similar plat that you saw last week or at the last meeting. This is the other tract of land that Mr. Far bought from the Cokers. This one is just over five acres, divided into three lots. It's a minor subdivision. This is where the old concrete plant was. The property had been zoned light industrial and we recently downzoned that to R1. So the plat is in conformance with R1 and qualifies as a minor subdivision. So the planning commission approved this at their last meeting and now it comes forward to you for acceptance, abeesements, and rights of way. So if you're so inclined, we're recommending that the council do that.
He's going to remove those five houses and then put all these other ones in there?
Yeah, so...
Put it on that hillside?
Yeah. This one's got three lots and the one previous one that had four. And each lot is, these ones, these lots are acre and a half, acre and a half, and two and a half. The other four were similar in size, so... There's three residential structures right now that are all on the previous, all on the parcel to the east. The building you see there on the, I think that's an accessory structure. That's now a residential...
There are four structures? Four residences?
There used to be a little cave house right down there, too.
Okay, yeah, so that's four.
Yeah, the one Steve Popper lived in.
There's three on the other one and one on this one.
One on this one and a large outbuilding.
Did you put the Far out on that when they called on Far at one time?
Yeah, but they're all going. The outbuilding, Ron says, might stay. He said no. Maybe the purchaser wants to keep it and build a house next to it, which would be a bond, so don't know exactly about that one yet.
All right. Any other questions? Motion?
I make a motion. We consider the final plat for Coker Hill State West as presented. Is that enough?
Yes, I'm fine, yeah.
In a second. Hold on. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council. The motion carried.
All right, thank you.
I did get a text from Patrick about five minutes ago that he's on his way.
Who've you done with?
He didn't forget us.
I thought maybe he had the night off with Frank?
No, I don't think he does.
I wouldn't do that, not both of them.
All right. Moving on. Item 4C, consider architectural services agreement for water treatment plant project.
Yes, council, this project is one that we recently authorized with the additions to that 2015 bond issue. Actually, this consists of two projects. One of them is a new lab and office space within the filter building at the treatment plant, and the other project would generally be some architectural enhancements to the exterior of the building. We long recognize that the look of the building isn't exactly commensurate with what you would like to see from a public works facility, so the effort, the idea would be to clean up the exterior, maybe get rid of some of the loading docks, re-site the building, maybe some window treatments, maybe reconfigure the entrance into the building. The intent now is to have both these projects as a design build RFQ. So we would send out a proposal for engineering and contracting firms to team up and give us a design build proposal on these two projects. But in order to do that, those teams need some idea of what it is we think we want to do, and that's really not expertise that we have here on staff right now. You know, the architect, we really need the help of an architect to define what we can do with the building, what we should do with the labs, how the entrance could work, and to develop possibly some renderings of what that might look like and come up with some sort of a specified scope of the project so we can get the bids that we're going to need to perform the work. He'll also help us through coming to what we can afford. Project scope is a danger with these sorts of things. We want it to look great, but maybe we're only going to be able to make it look really good, and so he'll be able to help us do that. So we've met with them. Jay Zimberscheid is the architect. Brad's actually familiar with him, was recommended to us, and he's come through and met with us a couple times. His services there, proposal totals $5,200. Patrick's reviewed the agreement and has a couple of tweaks to the terms of the agreement. Nothing big, some things about limitation of liability. But pending Patrick's approval of the contract, we'd like your authorization to spend the $5,200, which is just above my spending authority. And of course, money will come from the bond issue and exhibit fee on the staff report. I've got a spreadsheet that outlines all the costs we've had so far and what we expect to see where we are now, so with your authorization, I'll be able to get Mr. Zimberscheid on board and begin that process.
Any questions from Patrick?
On that, Mike, did you tell him about the...
I told him there were a few things on the limitation of liability that you wanted tweaked.
Yeah, they're pretty minor. I have them printed out here. I just want to take a quick look.
Just in time, Patrick. Look at what you put on the first few items.
Mike just commented on, as we've talked before, generally speaking, for several years now, the council's been opposed to any limitation of liability. What we've, sort of the compromise has been, we have allowed vendors to limit their liability to the amount of insurance coverage. But in talking to this gentleman, he explained, and maybe Mike touched on this, that this really is not, he's not drawing up plans, it's more just sort of pretty light consultant. He's just providing insight, so it's not unlike another, like an engineering contract or drawings that potentially if they're wrong, it could, you know, cause some serious liability. This is different. So I was comfortable with just going with three times his maximum fee and he was fine with that as well. So I think it's a reasonable compromise. Has he agreed to the red line that you made on here? So we would make the motion based on the revised agreement? Yep, and he actually emailed just not too long ago, an edited version. I just didn't have time to print it out, but so I guess he's in agreement.
Well, I would make a motion that we authorize Mike to sign the revised agreement from Zimberscheid Architects for the amount of $5,200.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to accept the agreement. Any further discussion? Roll call.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carried.
All right. Item 4D, 2018 budget discussion.
Yeah, we continue. Based on the last discussion, I've got a couple of things, some big ticket items that we were wrestling with last time, I've got some projections for you all, and I've made some adjustments to the budget projections that will ultimately be included in the 2018 budget. The first item that I want to talk about is the debt service and electric utility. We talked last time that the debt service fund has a year-end fund balance that exceeds what we really need to keep in that fund going forward. That fund really is a straight in and straight out. We collect the tax, we pay the debt on a yearly basis. The only real practical reason to have a fund balance in that fund is when we have debt payments that occur at the start of a year before we might get a tax revenue in from the county. And the way all of our debt is structured is that those early debt payments are just interest and the later ones that occur, those ones occur in March or April, the later ones that occur later in summer or the fall are the principal. So talk about this with our financial advisors and they're advising that really there's no need to keep any more than about $350,000 in that fund. So we have that issue to think about, and the things that we were talking about were using some of that fund to pay off some debt service early, to increase our overall bonded indebtedness position to assist with that, or using that in some way to pay back the electric utility fund, which was the other big ticket item. In 2016, we borrowed $450,000 for the Commerce Drive project and there's a desire on the council to get that paid back. So what I've done to kind of address both of those issues, and exhibit A shows five year, the five year budget projections that will essentially enact this. Currently and for the past several years, we've budgeted a pretty large transfer from the water fund into the debt service fund, and that essentially goes to pay past bond issues and the 2015 bond issue that we're still spending. That amount has exceeded $320,000 over the next several years, and previous versions of the budget just had that occurring again to make the water fund fully pay for its own debt. The suggestion here is to take $225,000 of that transfer that had gone into debt service, instead transfer that into the electric utility fund. Do that next year and do that in 2019 so that by the end of 2019, we pay the electric reserve fund back for the $450,000. And the effect is that the year-end fund balance in the debt service fund will be reducing. So we'll be essentially using that built up reserve in the debt service fund to pay back the electric reserve fund, but this is just the manner in which we're doing it. So in exhibit A there, I've annotated, you can see transfer, this is the debt service fund on the first page of exhibit A, the kind of the big one. There's transfer from water. You can see that the last, well, in 2017, we budgeted $389,000, and that goes down to $163,000, then $162,000 next year. Those represent the $225,000 each. Now, on the next page of exhibit A, this is the electric utility fund. I didn't have this in front of me when we were talking about the budget last time, so I didn't really know exactly, and we're talking about it in relation to the vehicle equipment and placement fund, but how low that fund had gotten or would get. We're currently projecting that fund to end this year over $1 million. And so with an infusion of $225,000 in 2018, that fund's projected to end 2018 at 1.2 million. And then again, similarly, in 2019, it's projected to end at 1.4 million. So that'll make that fund whole, essentially. And again, these projections do show, that projection on exhibit A does include the lease purchase plan that we had. So you can see $170,000 in there for lease purchase, that's a payment out, buy a dump truck essentially, and then the next year, $178,000, that's, I think it might be another dump truck, I can't exactly remember. But so that's all worked into that. So that's what I've come up with in response to that conversation that we had at the last meeting. Exhibit B, exhibit B shows the effect on the electric reserve fund from the implementation of the vehicle equipment and replacement program, assuming that we do this $225,000 transfer. So you can see the same fund balances at the end of 2018, at 1.2 million we just mentioned, at the end of 2019, at 1.4 million I just mentioned. And this spreadsheet goes, takes that program all the way out to 2030, so we can just see really long term. And the highlighted sections, the kind of the orange highlight on rolling stock expenses, there we're buying dump trucks and vehicles, that's the program as you go out all the way. The reason it changes to green in 2027 is because the program, the overall program rolls over. So that $170,000 in 2027, that's replacing the dump truck that we buy next year. It's worn out by 2026. I'm not saying it will be, we're just saying it might be, or chances are it could be. So that's the rollover of the program, essentially. And this analysis still assumes that we're charging ourselves 3% interest on these loans that we're taking out. So all the other funds in the capital outlay are paying this back at 3%. Turns out, after discussing this with our financial advisor, 3% is probably high, that we could likely borrow at somewhere just under 2 maybe percent. Again, the electric reserve money that we invest, it earns less than half a percent right now, or just over half a percent, really isn't much. So the window, I think the logical window to charge ourselves, and we don't need to make this decision now, but charge ourselves is somewhere between half a percent and 2% probably.
When we first were there, what did that state regulate it, how much we charged ourselves? Didn't the state tell us anything, how much we can charge or what do you... I don't know, I remember, I'm trying to find that.
Yeah, you may be thinking of the arbitrage where the city with bond proceeds, you can't invest those in...
Yeah, I was thinking about when we, the first time when I came over, we borrowed money to buy trucks and pay it back. I don't know why I think that. I try to find one back in my paperwork, but I personally can't, so I can't find that, so my computer wasn't working out.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe that was just kind of the interest rate at the time.
I don't know. I'm not sure of that.
Sure. Anyway, I think we have discretion on what that number is. But I think, you know, the news is good. If you look at this table here, this is all we ever do with that electric reserve fund. You can see that, you know, the fund balance, it never gets below 1.4 anywhere, really. It just kind of stands pretty solvent. So, and Columbia Capital thinks this is a really good use of this money. It's better than putting it where we've got it. So they're very supportive of the concept. The other thing I asked them to do was to look at, even after all these arrangements, diverting from the debt service fund... diverting from the debt service fund, we're still going to have some debt service fund reserves that we need to decide kind of what, if anything, we want to do with those. So I posed that question to Columbia Capital. I got back this email from them, and we won't go over everything. I'll just give you the summary of it is, essentially, we've got two bonds that are callable this year. One of them was issued in 2009, and the other one was issued in 2010. They total $2.3 million. We could essentially refinance those now. And even if we don't put any debt service, debt service cash reserves into that refinancing, their analysis shows that over the term of this refinance agreement, the savings will be 392, almost 400,000 dollars. That would not extend the life of those bonds at all. This would still end the bonds when they're scheduled to end. So that analysis shows that it makes sense to do it, and it would make even more sense if we had a chunk of money from the debt service, from the debt fund to upfront load this. If you're wondering about the amount left, after we divert the $225,000 for two years from that, and if we want to keep a $350,000 balance in that fund that we've said that we need to, we're going to have about $193,000 that we could put on the front end of refinance to make these numbers look even better. That's something we could pursue this year if we want to. I hadn't really thought about going into that, but that's Columbia Capital's recommendation that we look into doing that. And again, it could be a conversation for another day. I don't, it doesn't necessarily drastically impact the budget for next year, unless we want to, we want to budget that $193,000 of expense into the 2018 budget. The other thing I wanted to point out about the debt service fund is that I think previously, we were looking at reducing the mill levy on the debt service fund. Currently, its portion is 4.9 mills, and previous versions of the budget that you'd seen would have reduced that to 3.5 mills. It was 3.8. The, what I'm showing here, these projections, we're leaving that debt service mill levy the same. We're leaving it at 4.9. So rather than an overall mill reduction from 27 to somewhere around 24, we're looking at one from 27 to somewhere around 25 now, if we accept these, what I've got laid out here. So, and, you know, we can, that's sort of a policy decision for us, you know, to kind of wrestle with. Debt service mill levies are not subject to the property tax law. So we could increase it in future years if we had to without a vote. And that's not like, you know, if we reduce the general fund mill levy and we want to increase it next year, we'd have to vote. That's not the case for debt service. But essentially, leaving that mill levy the same would let us take advantage of the increased in assessed valuation. So even though the mill levy's the same, if your valuation goes up, your tax, so the tax bills are in dollars. Rick said at the last meeting, tax bills are in dollars, not mills. So that's something to consider as well. So that, I kind of want to stop and answer any questions, or if anybody's, if everybody's comfortable with that and want to move on, the next thing is capital improvements stuff. So it's a good time to have some discussion if we want to, now that we voted forward. Anybody have any questions about that?
The thought on not reducing the mill that, the debt service mill is to allow us to... The extra money we will use to pay off the debt, assuming we went that course and front-load any bonds, if we didn't do that, then we would just be, we would just have the 390,000. We wouldn't have the extra money to put toward that.
Yeah.
So we'd have 400,000 in savings instead of...
It's a minimal impact on a one-year basis, but when you start looking at the five-year, that's really where, you know, if you're assuming you reduce it this year and you don't increase it, that's when your ability to do that refinancing kind of gets tempered. The other thing it would do is it might make us delay repaying the capital through the electric utility fund, maybe instead of a two-year thing, maybe we have to look at a three-year thing. Something a little less aggressive in that vein. Anybody else have any questions, comments, tomatoes to throw? Okay. Well, put that away, set that aside, put that completely out of your mind, because I have a whole new...
Don't, my old stuff?
Well, your old stuff's good, but the new stuff's good too.
It's even better.
Capital projects, capital improvements. Last several years, we really haven't had much of an opportunity to program specifically what capital projects we'd like to implement for the following year. We've just included a lump-sum item. That's going to be our capital projects budget, and we work out which projects we're going to do at the start of the next year or later in that fall. What I've just handed out to you is, to my knowledge, kind of the first, our first ever, really, a five-year rolling capital improvements plan that identifies all the projects we think we want to do and kind of shows when we want to do those and how that affects the cash flow in the capital improvements fund, and what sort of revenue we're going to need either this year or in the out-years to do those projects. So the first page, and I don't, sorry, I don't have it out on the display to show the audience, but come by and see me some other time. The first page here I handed out just shows the revenues in the capital improvements plan. So on the top of, across the top, A through K, those are the columns, and then I have row numbers, so we're going to talk about a specific column or row we can. Rows five through 17 are really the historic sources of funding for the capital improvements. You can see transfers from general fund property taxes. That's the 4.1 mills historically that we've set over to road improvements. We've got transfers, you have KDOT Fund Exchange, CDBG money is in there, other transfers from other departments that represent all the revenues that we have. The columns shown are, shown the 2016, the 2017 budgeted and projected, and then the 2018 budget. And then it projects also to 2022. The only decisions we're really probably making right now are related to that 2018 project. Everything else would, we're going to be having the same, similar discussion next year. But you can see down line 17, there's a thick line there, then line 17, 18, and 19 are funding sources that are not guaranteed and maybe we haven't seen before. But Johnson County Cars, we've used Cars money, but we just don't typically reject that it's a revenue source. I'm projecting a $750,000 Cars money revenue in 2019, and this is an assumption that we're able to use Cars money to extend 91st Street at Sunflower, which is shown in the implementation schedule in the next few pages. Line 18 is a federal STP Surface Transportation Program funding. This would come through Mark, Mid-America Regional Council. I've got $1.5 million to replace a bridge, 83rd Street Bridge over the railroad tracks. That's just shown in 2021. And then 19 is kind of the scary line item. These are future bond proceeds, they don't necessarily have to be bond, but other unidentified revenues. If we want to implement what we've got on the next few pages, it's going to take another couple million bucks to do it. So, thoughts on the revenue side? So let's start on page two then with the appropriations. So these projects that are shown here in the appropriations, lines 24 through 48, these are straight, lifted straight from your capital improvement master list that we've had. This colorized version that we've had for a while, that's broken down from streets to facilities to stormwater sidewalks, parks, water and sewer. I've tried to color code sort of on this, the same as we've had on our other list. But not everything from our master list is shown here on the projection sheet. These are only items that are shown as priorities one or two from our master list. And so if you go down through there, the road maintenance program of $437,000, I'm showing that in the, and this is just kind of a first brush at this, fully funding that. The $437,000 level is a full funding of our government's rolling maintenance program that we've had staffed for several years. You can see in 2019 and '20, that goes down because we're putting money into some other priorities, something a lot like we did this year with 91st Street. Kind of had to steal some from that maintenance program to implement that. So I won't belabor the rest of the, the rest of the items there in the 2018 budget spreadsheet, but you can see that if there's a number there in that column, that means that project is implemented next year. And if there's not, then it's in the out-years. And we could talk, I just, I want to explain the last page on these. This would also be an appropriations budget, the last page, and it's shown in all green. These are the strategic plan priorities. These are, I think you've seen this list previously. They tend to be smaller dollar items, so I'm showing some implementation of these as we go out. One thing I want to go back, I apologize, and go back to the first page on the revenue side. And I'm not sure that this is a long-term thing we want to do. But line 20 there, the contingency line item in the general fund administration, that amount of $132,980, we've talked about, that was, that's the amount that this year's budgeted straight to debt service, straight payments to debt service. But in 2018, it doesn't have to be. So that $132,980, for our purposes here, I'm showing it as a revenue in the capital improvements. It doesn't have to be. It's just, right now, it's just a contingency in the general fund. And I think probably it's not exactly, you know, maybe, maybe, I think probably better solution would be to take a part of that, maybe put it toward visioning priorities, strategic plan priorities, issues, and then take the rest of it and put it in capital project. But for now, we've lumped them together. I just think it makes sense over time not to have the visioning strategic plan priorities included with your capital project, because really, they're not. If you look at them, they're not really capital projects. But I think we, the way we formulated our discussions is, gosh, we've got a lot of stuff we really want to do that costs money on the capital side. We've got a lot of stuff we really want to do that costs money on the strategic planning side. We have funding pots for both. Let's put them together and decide what we really want to do. So that's what I, that's why I structured it that way. I know you're just getting this, so I don't want to present that this 2018, those things in that column are set in stone, but it's a, it's something to start talking about. I would say, if you look at the end of page three, line 60, we've got the ending balance for the capital improvements fund. You see, it's just over $7,000. It's essentially, it's essentially using it all. And so what that would mean is we've got about $1.1 million in capital and strategic plan stuff that if we adopt this, would be in that budget for 2018. The other thing I would suggest is that we, there's really no, there's no need to specify each project in the budget. On the budget forms we send to the state, they don't care. In the budget document that we'll have, you know, that we bind up for the council every year. I don't know there's a burning need to show every one of these line items in there. We might want to take one or two of the bigger ones and show that's certainly our intent, but we could formally or informally kind of adopt this as our capital improvement plan and make these decisions as we go. There's no, I don't think we should really tie ourselves down with a particular thing shown in the budget for one reason or another, so. I think, the other message here is, there's other stuff on this master list that isn't on there that might rise to the, you know, maybe someone feels strongly about, or it might become a bigger issue for some reason we don't see until it happens. But the other message is, even doing the priority one and two, it's a pretty aggressive program for the next five years, for a town our size, for what we've done in the past. It's pretty aggressive, but it's going to need at least $2 million of funding that we have to really identify it. So that's the message. And, you know, if you look at the $100,000 in additional, maybe it's a anonymous benefactor donation in 2019, the reason that's there is because we're constructing 91st Street along up to Sunflower Road. That's where that's programmed, that's 2019. That's the main reason we need $100,000 there. There's a lot of different ways we can fund that project. Transportation Improvement Districts, you know, we could chase some other grant funding. There might be some other, some other sources out there. There's just a lot in that $1 million number that would need to be flushed out as we work through. And some of these projects, like, you know, maybe like that one, if we can, if we can get some assistance financially from, maybe it's a, maybe it's a benefit district or something like that, maybe we can make it work. But if we don't get that assistance, then we just have to delay the project. But I think laying it out like this, really for me, starts these years turning about needing funding in these out-years. And this is an important thing for us, I think, to have this. We might even extend it out more than five years, some of these bigger projects. That's where the big cities do them. They'll extend these things out 10 years and start working on getting funding in year one for something that's going to happen in year seven. But it just, it does give clarity to the scope and the amount of work and projects and initiatives that we're going to be able to reasonably implement with the resources we have. And we can, we can talk all day about scopes and prices and schedules and things, but I think it's good to have the overall picture in front of us as we daydream about what we're going to have.
So what do you think is going to happen with the, do you think the SMAC money could be plugged in some of those outer years possibly for?
Really good point. That was one I had intended. So the SMAC is a really good one.
Like that would offset the Miller Park drainage, the Ottawa Culvert?
Yeah. Yeah. So the SMAC program, I think I've talked a little bit about. They're kind of redoing how they allocate funding. And before, they've never been able, we've never been able to use that funding to replace any storm sewer that's been gone bad. They're really only for new projects. They're in the process now of reevaluating that so that you can use that for maintenance, replacement stuff. They're probably another couple of years away from that. But I probably...
Well, it just depends on how many culverts go back into the park, or how fast that will.
Well, there's a fairness, there's a fairness question, yeah. Yeah, there is, there is that. That's true. I still, I'm still attending those meetings.
They're good.
Yeah. Yes, SMAC's the thing we need to do. So I guess the overall message is, we still have the same amount of money. So budget-wise, we don't really need to make any of these decisions. But I, you know, I think there's time to have some discussion about them, and the fact that I put some numbers in here in the 2018 column, a good place to start. And the fact that I put some numbers in here in the two thousand eighteen column, good place to start, I think. And again, you're just seeing it, so we don't, we don't, and we're not needing any decisions done. Have a look through that. If you have a question about scope, that's the other thing, you know, all you have is a project name on here. On this one, I just handed out, you've got a little description on this master list. But it's still, a lot of these could still use some clarification about exactly what we're doing when that happened. So, as we come closer to implementing them, those things tend to fall in place, and you can find those a little better. So I know that's a whole five-year CIP discussion, it's probably a whole work session right there
What was the soccer fields phase one? That area, forty-six thousand?
Right.
What does that get us?
Well, so, you know, really that would get us a, one big area, one big green, nice little grass area to probably mark out three soccer fields at Lexington Lake Park. So that we could have one season, either the spring or the fall season of soccer out there. The way the soccer works in basic terms is we have a, we have a fall season and a spring season. And we can't really use the same fields for both seasons. You can use it one season, but then it has to rest. And so you can reseed an area and get it ready for the next. So you really need two separate facilities for both the seasons. This would, that phase one essentially would take everything that occurs in Miller Park right now, be able to move it out to Sunflower, I'm sorry, to Lexington, to Lexington Lake Park. So it would be the big green grassy area and a gravel parking area, not paved parking, but need more for that. And supporter trunks. I guess there's a bath facility out there, it's kind of far away.
Right.
It would also be, we'd need to strike, strike an agreement with the county that allows us to do it. And they'd have to allow us to do the gravel parking, which they might, they don't, they don't like gravel parking. So they might not let us do that. So it's contingent on those things.
Gravel, like it's previous pavement.
Oh.
You haven't explained it right.
Yeah, I need to, I've, I've never been in a position to have to sell a gravel parking lot. I guess you have. Yeah, good point. This wouldn't, of course, that wouldn't be ready. You know, if we did it next year, it wouldn't be ready next year. It'd be, it'd be ready in two thousand nineteen. So we still need to implement a temporary solution to, I, I think at least a commitment, a goal of mine is to never have to play soccer at Miller Park again. We love Miller Park, but soccer there has not been a great, a great thing for us. So I, I think we're, wheels are in motion to not, not, not to have to play soccer there in the spring of two thousand eighteen. And we've talked about the Riverfest par, there's room out at Countryside. And we, actually the Baptist church has reached, Linda Wayne, reached out and said, hey, there's a possibility here too, maybe for a practice field or something there at the church property. So, there's some, there's some space around town we can make use of, I think.
Do you need some kind of approval tonight?
Well, no, like I said, on this, on this, I wanted to just kind of introduce the topics. Have a look at that, we can talk about more the next time. You know, still on our, on our budget schedule, we're looking good. We've got, we've got another meeting in June, we've got both July meetings before we move to publish for the public hearing in August. So we, we have several other meetings to work through these. And again, the CIP stuff isn't something that needs to be made about the budget. The other thing, the last things on the budget though, I did want to talk about, is this policy issues table that I've got attached to the staff report. This, whatever exhibit that is, exhibit E, I guess. I intend to include this table in the budget document as a, kind of a background and supporting information table. It, it really narrates some of these larger decisions that we've made throughout the course of the budget cycle. The ones in yellow were ones that I don't think, you know, we were working on these last time, so we didn't really make decisions on, on any of these issues. Items five through eight, we've talked about, and I thought we're relatively settled, so they're not highlighted, but obviously nothing's done until we go on the budget. So, this talks about the mill levy. It represents that we're, we're decreasing the mills by one point eight, so that includes decreasing the mill in the general fund and the law enforcement fund. Talks about leaving the debt service mill levy level. Then item two talks about the debt service and its mill levy, the use of the balance, we're keeping three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and leaving that mill levy level. Item three talks about the electric reserve repayment that we discussed before, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over each of the next two years. Item four talks about contingents, the contingency funding. Maybe utilized for initiatives from strategic planning process. The other, the budget to zero is really more of a technical issue on the state budget forms that will impact us on a day-to-day level. What does show up on the state budget forms, essentially what it does is it zeros out your fund balance. You're showing that you're not, you're gonna spend all the money you're gonna generate and all the money you've already got all next year. And we know we're not gonna do that. So, it'll be different on the state budget forms, and many cities do that. Item six is the implementation of the vehicle and equipment replacement program, and we've talked about that before. Item seven, three point five percent merit increases. And item eight are the two new employees, full-time positions. Utility clerk at City Hall and a monitor janitor position. I think those are the big policy decisions. If there's, if you think there's more, this isn't, this isn't something that we've done in the budget previously. But I think, I put it together because we wanted to get it in front of you and make sure that everybody's on board with these decisions we're making, that they're not lost in the, well, we talked about it and never voted on it. And so, really, there's only gonna be one vote on this thing, so. It's important, and I mean, I don't want to be hiring somebody next spring, somebody comes and says, who's the new guy? What the, you know? So, that's why we do that. If there's, if there's another big thing like that, you know, bring it to my attention and we'll get it, we'll get it on that spreadsheet. And that was all I had on the budget. I'll say that I draw it out to lay the floor.
Well, I'm, do you want to, I mean, do you want to get consensus on one to four now, or?
I, I think so, yes.
If we can, I mean.
And it's nothing that, like I said, we only vote once.
Right. I guess if we, if we work in agreement, it will tell you where you might need to adjust, right? Well, I can tell you, I'll just start, I'll just, I, I don't, I was, I hoping for a little bit more of a mill reduction, but I'm, I'm good with where we are. I think, you know, it represents about a seven percent reduction in the mill to offset a roughly ten percent, you know, percent increase in your valuation. So, I like paying back the electric reserve fund in this manner aggressively when we get it in there. I like the contingency funding for our strategic initiatives is good for next year, so I'm, I'm in agreement with all of your one to fours.
Anybody else?
I agree, I'm, I'm in agreement with them.
Yeah, I think that's good, I would pay that utility fund back and stuff, so we have to totally agree. Yeah, looks like you did plan maybe upon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for building that electric utility fund back up. I think he has a way to do it, so.
Where did that start at, and when we sold that? We, it's always been right around a million and a half, is that, do you remember Tim? Was that?
One point seven, wasn't that?
Yeah, I think it was one point seven.
Yeah, I thought it was two, but I think it was.
We haven't, we haven't tapped into that too much, you know.
I love it because it's security.
Yeah, we've had different times where council wanted to spin it down. I've always argued that we need to keep that in reserve, you know. Borrowing against it is a really good practice. Not many cities can have that much money sitting aside that they can borrow against themselves.
Our size, for sure.
All right.
Great, thank you. How old are you then?
Okay, thank you. Uh, executive session, none? Advisory reports, huh?
I do have two items that have to do with expenditures above my authority. And I don't, I don't like to throw these type of things at you, but these are both time-sensitive. So I wanted to get your, get your authority to do these. One of them is work that we need to do in preparation for the Slurry Seal project that we have coming up. There's a couple of areas in the Dometo subdivision that really need to be milled and overlaid, large, large patch areas. And we don't have a milling machine large enough to do the job. So we've asked McAnany and Construction to give us a price while they're in town milling Ninety-First Street, come over and do those two patch areas for us. And their, their quote is for seventy-seven hundred dollars. We have a contingency in the capital improvement plan for the Slurry Seal project of four thousand dollars. So I'm suggesting we use that contingency to pay a portion of that, and then the rest would come from the street department budget. So, if you, if you could, if you're comfortable with that, authorize me to sign this proposal for McAnany for seventy-seven hundred dollars. Appreciate a motion.
Did they just extend their unit prices from their Ninety-First Street, or have to add a mobilization in there?
No, I'm sorry, this was sort, more of a lump sum thing. I figured one ten-hour day, four men, two loaders, milling machine, not, we didn't really tie it down.
I make a motion that we authorize Mike to contract with McAnany to do the milling in Dometo's for seventy-seven hundred dollars.
Second? Motion second, any further discussion?
Hold on just one second, I wasn't prepared for this.
Oh.
Sorry.
What?
That's another reason I don't throw these things. I never tell Lana.
How much, seventy-seven hundred, I'm sorry? And that was the second by Kevin?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, ready?
All right.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
All right. What do they do with the milling, and they off the streets?
We're giving you. A lot of times we give them, yeah. On the Ninety-First Street, most of the projects that I've bid out recently give us the option. If we want them, we can take them. And so we have them stockpiled and we use them to put on roads and whatever throughout the year. Ninety-First Street project, for some reason, I left that out of there, so they've got other plans for it. So, I think it's part of it.
Well, we did Gilchrist, state would let, we couldn't have this.
No, that was a, yeah, the state did it too. Most of the other stuff, and we, yeah, we, we did Eighty-Seven Street, gone out from your house. They're good, they're good to have.
Well, we were talking about the cemetery out there.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to figure out a way to get some new roads, you know, build up.
Asphalt milling's, it's pretty, they're pretty popular because they're not dusty.
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing I had for you relates to the, I'm not even gonna show you this, relates to the K-ten apartment complex, and the water line is being installed in there. The, the plan for the, the water mains interior to the site are public water mains. So there's easements around each one of them, and the contractor, the developers constructing those, and when they're done, they'll turn them over to the city for ownership and operation. So the plan is to connect to the water main along Commerce Drive and extend it up to the apartment complex, and that'd be the water source. While they were doing the earthwork for the apartment complex, digging along their west line, they found a water main that extends off of Orchard Drive, that we didn't know existed. There's a six-inch water main that runs up Orchard Drive, and there's a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac, and we figured that ended there. Evidently, it extends all the way onto the apartment site, complex site. And so, they asked and were wanting, isn't it, wouldn't it be nice if those connected? Not that, not that the apartments aren't gonna just use that six-inch, they're still gonna connect across the street, and they already have, actually. But to just have a loop there and have some redundancy, and if there's any flow issues on Orchard Drive, not that we know that there is, but if there ever were, this would help that. If something happened along Commerce or Bray or something, we just think it's advisable to do it. But it wasn't on, it's not in the developer's responsibility to connect that. We approved the plans, didn't know that was there. So, the contractor on the job is R.D. Johnson, they're doing, they're installing the water main this week. They've given us a price quote of eleven thousand six hundred dollars total to do that work. Discussed this with Travis Hicks and his partners, they're willing to pay twenty percent of this cost. And also, we've, we've adjusted the layout, we've taken a valve out, done some other things. So this, that cost might come down even a little bit more. So what we would be left with would probably be about nine thousand dollars, somewhere between eight and nine thousand dollars that we would be responsible to make this connection. And so discussing this with Doug and everybody involved, I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. Our money would just come out of the water apartment budget miscellaneous contractual services. It can absorb an eight thousand dollar expenditure. I don't have the final proposal in front of me. Like I said, there's, there're gonna be some reductions, and then the apartments are gonna pay twenty percent. So what I, what I'm asking is for your authorization to spend up to nine thousand dollars out of the water department fund to, to make this connection. And again, this is a time-sensitive thing because they're out there now putting in, putting in water mains this week and next week.
So this would be for flow to Orchard, or?
Well, either way, really either way. I mean, it would loop the system.
It must be looping right now, is all right? So it's connecting between Lexington and Commerce now?
It just stops in the middle of the field?
Yeah, it doesn't loop now.
It doesn't?
It just stops in the middle.
So they're fed from Commerce then?
Who, Orchard?
Orchard.
No, Orchard Drive comes off of Lexington.
Yeah.
There's a ten-inch main along Lexington.
Right. But they went past the?
For whatever reason, they went to the proper line, yeah. And, and, and they didn't, they didn't find the end of this pipe. It extends onto the site somewhere, they're not exactly sure where. Pretty confident it doesn't connect up to Commerce now. But even if it, if it does, it needs to come out.
Right, it's in the road, all right. In the way of the.
Yeah, it'd, it'd be good from a system hydraulic standpoint to, to loop, loop the system. You know, it is, it's right there on site, so this is something we think makes sense to do.
Any other questions?
Uh, I move we'll authorize Mike to contract with R.D. Johnson for an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars to make the connection of the six-inch water main at Orchard Drive. Paid for out of the water fund, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You have a six inch or any issue?
The, the, Orchard Drive is a, is a six, we're gonna put in.
How second motion?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Ritter?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. A motion carried.
Thank you.
You have it?
That's it, yeah.
All right. Patrick?
Yeah, not to outdo Mike, but I have an ordinance Lana doesn't know about. And apologize, that's why I was late to the meeting. Steve Chipp came to me late this afternoon and indicated that the building permit discount program is, by ordinance, was, is scheduled to end tomorrow. So, I just wanted to make this ordinance available to you if you want to extend it. What I have here just extends it six months, which would be through December eighth, twenty-seventeen. So, if that's something you want to go ahead and adopt, that's fine. There have been other times where we've let it last, but the ordinance has made it retroactive, and we certainly could do that again. But if you did want to go ahead and take care of this, I'm gonna get you the ordinance.
I think we need to, I would like to extend it now, because I think if we're gonna not extend it, I think we need a bigger discussion about it. We have to know where we are, and, you know, a bigger policy discussion, so...
And a little bit probably, a little time maybe to look at it.
Right, so maybe put a tickler in there the first of November or something to bring this up again.
Okay, if you choose to extend it, the ordinance number will be two, four, one, nine.
I move we approve ordinance two, four, one, nine, extending the discount building permit program through December eighth, twenty-seventeen.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? We said the motion was... We'll call.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carried.
Lana?
I have nothing further to make, thank you.
Mike, just mention the council mayor. Next, the second meeting in June, I'm going to be out of town, but I'll just work with Mike and, if that's applicable, I guess.
That's it. Okay. Nothing from Lana?
No, thank you.
All right, council and mayor comment? Ron?
Zero.
Zero? Correct.
None tonight, mayor.
None tonight, nothing.
Kevin?
Nothing for me, mayor.
All right. And I don't have anything.
Well, but I move with your...
Call in favor? All right. We're done.
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Can you see this? It's just about...
Let me stop the video here then, for everybody.
Was Robert watching all of a sudden? Did you see him for like a building...